All right, so you, John.
Colleen, you wanna kick this off? Okay, welcome everyone. We have a couple of public hearing items for tonight, but I thought before we did that, we would stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate of injustice for all.
Let's just have a moment of silence for the men and women who fight for our freedom every day. Thank you. Okay, the first public hearing item is the amendment of section 149-28, which is, deals with the water district and people who happen to not be in the water district. This is a public hearing item that allows those that are not in the district to enter into the district at the discretion of the board. So this is something that's been advertised and... Is there any discussion on this item? Does anybody have any issues with this item? Do we have a motion to close this particular item?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah, enter into the water district.
That was one that we didn't enter into and now all of a sudden we should, how do we change it? We could enter it now.
This puts it at the discretion of the board.
But how come it wasn't able to put it discretion of the board last time? One of the previous owner did.
One of the previous...
The previous owner of their property tried to do that and it was never allowed to go in, it was never allowed to be in front of the board. What makes it be in front of the board now?
This is a, this is not, my understanding is it may have been brought forward by a specific individual, but this is amending the law on, that we have today, which if you're not in the water district, you're not in, you know, it takes a lot more to accomplish.
Well, I know, we tried to get, I was part of, people had tried to bring in the last time, we were told, there's no way, no how we could get in that district.
Right.
Yeah, I think this is giving them a how.
But no, but we already threw, somebody already went bankrupt on the property once before because we didn't let them in.
I would, I would only say Eddie, that was a different board at a different time.
Yeah.
And this board has chosen to say that...
I was on the board and I was...
I know, but I mean, most of us weren't, right? So, I would say this board right now is choosing to say, we're gonna give an option at the discretion of the board members to allow this to go forward.
I was also told at that time that with the water that came from the other side and sewer, everything is, was owned by an entity above, not us, correct?
It was owned by them.
You're talking about the condo properties?
Yep.
First of all, I think Eddie, what we did here was we changed the verbiage in the town code to allow the board, before that, the verbiage in the town code stated that we, the board hadn't, had, didn't have any teeth, they couldn't.
Right.
We changed the verbiage within that, within that code.
We're just changing the law, but are we voting on that now? Are we voting on whether there's gonna be a lot of the district now?
No, we just closed the public hearing.
We're just closing the public hearing. We let, asked for comments, no one gave a comment.
We sent it out to all the property owners around that area that were there?
That's right.
How many we get back?
It's my knowledge.
That should be part of this.
It's my knowledge.
No, I mean, the return request, we should've got it back from the ordering properties. Normally.
I don't know if we did that.
But we should've done that, we changed the verbiage.
We had a public notice in the newspaper. Colleen, do you know if we did any...
Well, I don't think we would have to send it to property, we'd have to send it to every single property owner that resides around the water district. We wouldn't have to do that. We did public notice that we were having.
I'm not saying you don't have to do it, but you can.
Okay, so apparently it wasn't done. This is amending the language to give the board discretion should somebody outside the district wish to be part of the district.
Now, the other thing that I've also been...
It's not specific to that particular piece of property either.
I understand this, but what I'm saying to you Howard, and I've been told by Tony Falcow before, that if all the properties that are in the district right now added in and put houses on the district, we would be over capacity. So if we add and, just keep adding more parcels to that, we're gonna have a problem.
That was part of the decision criteria on the board.
But we're also talking...
Rather than lock everybody out.
We're also talking about water. Tony Falcow's right about the sewer. We're talking about our water.
There's no sewer going there.
There's no, this is just water, I believe. This is just, we changed the verbiage in the water.
So that, that district does not want sewer this time?
No, this is just water.
This is water district, two separate districts.
Yes, this is just water and it's given us the discretion to, if we believe it's in the best interest of the whole community to allow these people in the district, then we would move forward with it.
I have no problem with the water.
Cause you know like, you know how Charlie's always asking, there's some loops that he would like to see.
Right.
Close.
He did want that one last time we brought it up from the board.
But sometimes it wasn't allowed, so now we're gonna make that possible.
But it's got nothing, the sewer is still not on the table.
This is water district.
Cause they're not in the sewer either.
No, this is just water.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
You can close it.
So can we close this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, the second public hearing item is around the subject of a community choice aggregation program presented to us by Sun and Energy. Are you the representatives from Sun and Energy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if I mistake this, you can correct me, but my understanding is this is a program that allows communities to aggregate their volumes and utilizes the resources of Sun and Energy to coordinate basically a new procurement model to leverage those volumes to try to get lower rates. It costs us nothing to be a part of this program and it costs us nothing to opt out of it. The other advantage is, is that it helps us stay on the leading edge of opportunities to enhance our participation in green energy and, you know, leverage any sources of green energy that today we might not be leveraging.
Something you know something about, John?
A little bit. A little bit. So...
Did you get it right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thanks. So anyway, so this is, this is a win-win in my opinion, but let me, let me ask if there's a motion to close this item.
I'll ask if they have any questions.
Any questions or any comment? Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to see, is this part of, of the town, of the town of twenty in this, with...
Yes.
Is it just in our area?
They can answer.
They can answer your question.
But restricted to all of Central Hudson's territory. You guys would be the second to study, build on your soils, considering officially not good, the law and, and servicing it. They didn't suddenly, they didn't do it. It's actually like just doing that end work.
And it goes to the effective part of the land.
So you'll start to realize that CCAS probably in a year, it's a year here. So it is a balance, the longer you take, the more municipalities you can aggregate, then more, uh, less, more leverage, you know, discretion of power. But at the same time, you can see those CCAs for a little bit longer. So it's, you know, it's kind of a little bit of, you know...
So far just to, to the municipality?
Yeah, we're talking a lot as well.
Is there, is there any point where you get to, if you have ten really, if you need to kick in, if you know what that number is?
Yeah. So my understanding is we have a choice to either buy on the day ahead market or to buy through a retailer on our own volumes. And so what this does is this gives us the opportunity to partner with other communities to leverage our, our scale, if you will. Any other questions, comments? No? Motion to close this item?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. All right, item number three, I guess, I don't know why these are ordered this way, but sort of motion to approve the agenda, since we're already into it.
Well, it was a public hearing, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, where is this, item two?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, motion to approve the agenda. I make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Okay, how about the motion to improve the minutes from the November thirteenth town board meeting and the public hearing of November thirteenth? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain, I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Item number five is authorization pay bills of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents. That's our upcoming accounts payable.
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Okay.
I wish that was our bill every...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. I wasn't aware of any presentations for the evening, but are there any? Let me just ask.
Oh, no.
No? Chris, presentation? No? Okay, alrighty. Any comments on the agenda of it, from anyone?
Yeah, I'm pushing on the, next up on the Milton Land and Landscape Master Plan. Does that plan tie into what BNC are working on?
Yes.
Yes.
Giving grants to build that.
Yes, yes. Both, both the upper and the lower, we have two, two grants for those and one grant for the Milton Pier, so three in total. We haven't heard the status on any of them yet, but we're waiting. Hopefully one...
Is it CFA?
See, two of them are CFA, one is a part of the Upstate Revitalization Initiative. We submitted them all through the CFA, but the Milton Pier is not really CFA, is my understanding. It's the Upstate Revitalization Initiative. The other two are for the park directly.
Is it late December though?
Hi. I thought sometime this month or December. I can't find out information on that. I've called them and asked for status and we're waiting to hear. Right there, mercy.
Okay, anybody else? No? Any new business items, Ray?
Yeah, the second meeting of December, I just wanna bring up, I know we've done it, it's on the twenty-fifth of December.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah, don't think that's gonna happen.
Is that Christmas Eve?
That's Christmas Day.
Christmas Day, twenty-fifth, yeah, twenty-fifth. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we, we've done this almost every year is to not have our second meeting of December due to the holiday and pick it back up in January.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. What's that?
Come on, Jerry. Well, that wasn't, that wasn't...
No.
That wasn't, that wasn't Christmas holiday.
Yeah, that was Columbus Day, I don't care about the Italians.
I also wanna bring up another thing, hopefully this won't take long, but I just wanna bring up cause we have been using Tomback a lot more lately. Couple problems that I know that occur there is there's no lighting in the back and we keep trying to fix the lights that keep blowing out. So we're having problems with people in the parking lot at night here. So I think maybe we should look into, I hate to do it cause we're trying to sell the building, but maybe ask Central Hudson to put one of those outside lights that we currently lease here. So it's a lease, so whenever we don't want it, we could just cancel the lease, so, and they're only like thirty dollars a month or something like that. But I was gonna ask the board if they're interested in me looking into that.
Yes.
If you like, cause they had a couple complaints.
They're thirty?
Yeah, I think it's like thirty dollars a month.
Still getting complaints.
Yeah, cause I was gonna bring this up. I'm seeing on the, on the bills, we still have the rental for the porta potty down at the Landing.
Oh, yeah, is that out of there?
We don't need that.
Yeah, we gotta get that.
In the winter. What's that? No. So we, a hundred dollars there.
Yeah, we get rid of that.
They'll pay for it.
We'll call them up.
Yeah, they'll pay for the light.
For a couple months anyway.
So who's that emotion Scott?
Yeah, I had a motion to do that.
Second?
You guys are okay with that, I'll call.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
And then the other thing I just wanna bring up too is the same thing on Tomback, is it's getting used a lot more and I don't know, I don't know how we're keeping track of all the, let's say, people going there and income that's going there and are we getting our, our share of what we were supposed to be getting out of that building? Because it's hard to judge from day to day how many people they're gonna be using it, but of course, we're using more electric, we're using more heat, we're using more of everything there. And again, we're doing it for the public too, so it's not like, we know we're not making money on it. But I was thinking, maybe we should revisit this coming year is to have a set fee for the use of the space rather than you telling me how many people you had there this week and we take a little, you know, money of it.
Yeah.
Maybe we should say it's like, I don't know, I don't know the number, but like a hundred dollars a month or whatever. We have to look at the numbers and see what we're getting, so, but...
Any takers on there?
To rent the pavilion?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
At the park, we're charging significant amount of money.
I mean, we're trying to make stuff for the public, but at the same time, people are running a business out of there on tax, other taxpayers dime, right? Let's be honest, that's what's happening. But we're doing it because it's being our, we're trying to get cheaper rates for people in the public to use those types of facilities, but at the same time, we don't want the other people that don't use it to pay for something off the backs of others. So I think we should definitely revisit it to show, I know me and Alan are on the committee and I wanna meet with Alan, we'll start maybe in January.
Yeah, sounds good.
We'll overlook this to see what, we'll go over with Colleen and Danielle, what, what they've been collecting, talk to Joe Wiles and, and come up with a rate that I think we could present to the board that's a little more reasonable. And then this way, we don't have to keep figuring out.
Yeah, it should be at a minimal, cost neutral.
Right.
To the taxpayers.
Is Vinnie, is Vinnie be involved in that?
Who's that?
Vinnie, Vinnie C.
If Vinnie still wants to be involved, I know Vinnie said he's been very busy lately.
Okay.
So he hasn't been as involved, but yes, I can get him.
Format we set up for the train station renting that out and stuff, like if you could punch, almost use that format and then punch, I mean, it's different prices in there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's like that.
Cause that format we set up pretty good.
And I wanna go over too, I know talking to Colleen a couple times is, you know, do we have everybody's actual right insurance on the file? Do we have everybody that's supposed to be involved there? Who has keys to the building? I mean, we got a little lax because we were getting excited about using this building.
Yeah.
And is the thermostat under lock and key, so it's settled?
I know coming in, I get, you know, I hear Tina every day, she's calling the plumber, the thing's getting backed up. The garbage is getting backed up. People aren't cleaning, I mean, I get messages from Donna Mead that she's gotta go down there an extra day because it's a mess. You know, if these people are gonna, and, and we want them, if they're gonna use the facility and we want to use the facility, they at least have to take care of the facility while they're there.
They probably spend a better part of the day cleaning out the garage.
Exactly.
The couches, TVs.
People are dropping stuff off in there now?
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
They, they spend a better part of the day cleaning that out, so...
So, you know, that's the thing, I don't know who has the keys anymore.
Yeah, well, maybe you need to rekey it and give it out to the people you wanna give it out to and start from scratch.
So, I just wanna, you know, I gotta say, hopefully you guys are all right with that and me and Alan and, and the rest of the team will come up with some recommendations for the board.
While you're doing thermostat, probably should be locked over. I mean, people can leave that thing on seventy-five after you...
That's true too. We went in there one winter, I remember John called me and it was like ninety-three's in there. They walked in, it was like a sun.
Imagine how much we use on that?
That's what happens.
One ninety-seven a month.
One ninety-seven a month is what?
Your income from January first through August thirty-first.
For everything?
For everything. Seven, five, maybe, six minutes.
So I mean, and I know they're using it like all the time.
That's our current income, two hundred a month roughly.
Well, and your exact income is a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents per month on average.
For everything.
January one, for August thirty-one, two thousand seven.
So, I mean, I, I know personally, cause I have family members that go to some of the classes, that there's fifteen or so or more people in a class and they up their rates to ten dollars a class, so doing it two or three times a week, that's a hundred and fifty dollars a session, that's, you know, four hundred and fifty dollars a week, times four, and we're getting like seventy-five dollars. I don't think something's right there. Someone's operating a business out of a town building now that, you know, I've gotten questions on that, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Soon as that's reached, Colleen?
Yeah, so, and how, how about the other...
Four days a week. It reduces four days a week.
So anyway, I don't wanna make it a big thing, but I just think it's something we gotta definitely look into.
Let's sit and work that out. Put something together.
Either that or we can lower the rate that you pay for your Zuba classes.
Yeah, well, that too. But, I mean, look, it's, we, we don't have a problem people using it, but we do need to at least cover our...
I think it's a good point.
I think, I think if we sit down, we will be able to figure out what it costs us to operate a building.
I know we spend about seven, depending on the usage, we spend anywhere from seven to nine thousand dollars a year in heat and electric, so it, it is a cost.
It does.
This is another reason why I wanna sell it Howard, is, is because the cost of that, plus if you got taxes, you're actually talking about a twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar revenue for the town on top of the sale of it. So, anyway, I don't wanna go on, that's the two items I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thanks. Okay, you got both of those right, Colleen? Did you get, you made note of both of those?
Yes.
Okay, all right. As far as correspondence goes, we have one letter of resignation from a Chris Valerius resigning as part-time dispatcher. I'm sure Chief is familiar with Christopher.
He's a security officer at the hospital over at the Dennis Mutual. And they're having staffing issues there, so he's being terminated. Nothing spoiling his part. Just after a discussion that I had, the department had your hunting last week, it's been out all the time. I thought it'd be better that he go for now, just when you do him, his life changes a little bit. He wants to come back, we could. We had a very gentleman-like discussion and he agreed and we got the letter. So he freed up a position. He lost a pretty good job into the Easy Dispatcher. Unfortunately, with his full-time job, he just can't maintain the schedule.
Yeah, see the football player? See the football player?
Yeah.
Big guy.
Yeah.
Played, touches, yeah. Yes.
That was a good guy to be sitting near when someone come in. You weren't gonna mess with him.
Yeah, I never met him. Yeah, this isn't something we normally vote on, right?
No.
No, we just accept it, that's it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, but...
Okay, item number eleven is open for public comment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say or? Yes, sir?
At the landfill?
Yes.
Well, the only thing I think they're really responsible for is plowing.
Yeah, and the, and the road. And I think what Larry's talking about is...
The road?
There's some ruts in the, the road, the driveway up to the transfer station and areas and I, we, I think Gail was up there trying to fill them in, but maybe he didn't do a good enough job, so maybe we need to go back.
The trucks are in there a couple times a week and I don't know what's going on and the drivers can see what's going on. They don't have any control as well as the joint.
Yeah.
It's the same when the highway brings up for us, they dump it in and I had to call Law and Walter Fickers, I believe he bought it.
Yes, he did.
And we worked an hour and a half trying to level that dumpster up because it's possibly down in resource and they never take it, put the tables, they stick it up near.
Yeah.
And then a lot of TVs, air producers, you know, it's a separate...
I'll take the doo-doo, this is something that we've, I've been discussing with Larry and Walton. It's something we have to get on top of. I'll, I'll talk to Gail, Alan, you and I will talk to Gail. We're on that committee and see if we can't come to some better understanding, cause I know you're not happy with the way it's been handled.
I'm trying to address that, I'm trying to clean.
You're doing a great job.
Work, but we were...
Much better. Yeah, I know, I know. And I was, I can use the, the excuse I was campaigning, but I'm not doing that anymore. So I'll have more time to get up there and...
But to Howard's defense, I've heard him at least four or five times talk to Gail about this.
Yeah, it's...
Directly, so I know he is still on it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get together and come to some agreement. I know what you're talking about. And you are, we appreciate the job you're doing up there, it looks a lot better.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a number of resolutions. The first one, Resolution A is Resolution one oh nine, number one oh nine, to authorize the town clerk to file the negative SECR declaration and any appropriate notices of this determination to adopt the Milton Land Park Landscape Master Plan, which I'm assuming all you guys are familiar with.
We have copies.
You guys all have copies, right?
Yep.
So this is a resolution to adopt that, that plan. Can you call the board?
Captain Walker?
Yes.
Captain Longell?
Yes.
Captain Kinnick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number one ten is to adopt a negative declaration for the CCA Sun Energy Program that we discussed earlier. Colleen, could you poll the board, please?
Captain Longell?
Yes.
Captain Porter?
Yes.
Captain Baker?
Yes.
Captain Kinnick?
Yes.
And Resolution number one eleven is to adopt into local law number eight of the year two thousand seventeen, adding a new chapter, one fifty-four entitled "Authority to Establish a Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program." So this is basically just adopting this into law, the same program.
Just to clarify case, John, on our sheet it says Resolution one ten still?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the type of...
So we gotta make amendment to that, our resolution for letter C to make sure it says Resolution number one eleven, not one ten.
I saw that.
So I make the motion to change that?
Yeah, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So who?
You okay with that, Colleen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I would second the motion for the first part there, where it says Supervision Alliance that offered a final resolution. And second it, I'll second it.
Scott's gonna be seconding the motion in the resolution.
In the resolution.
Yep.
In the resolution.
There's a second, some of these resolutions you get...
Yeah, you have to have it seconded so you can see.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Did she pull?
Yeah, did you pull? I don't think you pulled for... Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So the first one was a negative deck, the second one was adoption.
Yep. You guys are good. You got number two now, right? That's number two? All right.
All right. All right, so Resolution number one twelve is to adopt a negative declaration and this is the water district putting the entrance into the water district at the discretion of the board as we discussed earlier.
Yes.
Yes.
Captain Baker?
Yes.
Captain Kinnick?
Yes.
And Resolution number one thirteen is to adopt the same into local law, amending section one forty-nine dash twenty-eight C, Schedule of Water Rates, Marlboro Water District.
I'll second the resolution on page twenty-six, so... Pledge, pledge.
That was you, right Alan?
Yeah.
Captain Longell?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
One more.
Okay. And Resolution number ninety-seven is to reappoint a member, an alternative member to the Ulster County Planning Board. This was tabled last time pending the outcome of the election and at this time, I believe it's proposed that Ms. Lanzetta continue in that position.
And Howard.
As the Ulster County rep, right?
Yes.
And Howard.
And Howard as, as a back, as alternate.
And how long is that for?
It's every year, this is...
So that's continued every year? Okay.
Captain Porter?
Yes.
Captain Longell?
No.
Captain Kinnick?
Yes.
Captain Baker?
I guess I have to abstain, is that right?
If you do, if you, if you have to abstain, then this doesn't pay.
You have to abstain.
And we gotta table it again. All right, make a motion, we table it.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All right, so moved. All in favor?
Aye.